Good evening. Welcome to the Costa Mesa Planning Commission meeting for Monday, August 9, 2021. I call the meeting to order and ask that if you would, Commissioner Russell lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Commissioner Russell. Julie Roelkau, please.
Chair DeRico.
Here.
Commissioner Erath. Commissioner Erath, if you can unmute yourself. Commissioner Erath.
Present.
Okay, good.
Please note that Commissioner Erath is present via Zoom. Commissioner Russell. Commissioner Toller absent. Commissioner Zick.
Okay, thank you, Julie, very much. So, tonight, we are going to bid farewell. Didn't think it would be so soon after we bid our previous Commissioner farewell to our Vice Chair Jenna Torje, who has been serving on the Planning Commission with distinction. And Jenna is leaving the Commission. She's charting new paths. And so, we have a proclamation, Jenna, that we'd like to present to you. So, if you would join me over here at the podium, I'll read the proclamation and then we'll allow you to say a few words. So, I'm pleased to present to Jenna Torje a proclamation of the Planning Commission of the City of Costa Mesa, commending her for her service on the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission of the City of Costa Mesa hereby proclaims, whereas Jenna Torje was appointed to the Planning Commission in May 2019, and whereas Ms. Torje served as Vice Chair of the Planning Commission beginning in July of 2021, and whereas Ms. Torje contributed to the betterment of the community through her careful and thoughtful deliberations and actions on a number of significant development projects, plans, and ordinances, including small cell facilities, One Metro West, the Triangle, and cannabis retail regulations. And whereas Ms. Torje's professional background in community planning, active transportation, equity, and sustainability resulted in insightful input for important land use and housing policy decisions or recommendations. And whereas Ms. Torje has a master's degree in urban and regional planning from the University of California, Irvine, and a bachelor of arts degree in international relations from the University of California, Irvine. And whereas Ms. Torje fulfilled her responsibility as a Planning Commissioner in a conscientious, professional manner, now therefore be it resolved that the Costa Mesa Planning Commission hereby gratefully records and extends its sincere appreciation and the appreciation of the community to Jenna Torje for her faithful and excellent service on the Costa Mesa Planning Commission, dated this 9th day of August 2021, signed by the Chair Byron DeRico.
Thank you, Chair. It was my pleasure to serve as the Vice Chair for the month I was here. But I really want to extend my appreciation for everyone as part of this Planning Commission. I love Costa Mesa. I am honored to have served my city. And I hope that the investment that I've made in the community, I do know that it is, that more people have invested in me than I have in them. And I just want to express my gratitude for the residents of Costa Mesa, for our Planning Commissioners, for city staff. The Chair read a few items that we had made recommendations on and talked about over the past couple of years. And those ones stick out in my memory. But so did the smaller ones where Commissioner Zick just really got into the details. And I learned so much from your thoughtfulness towards the work and your thoughtfulness towards the Commission. For Commissioner Russell, who was always thoughtful about the big picture and how things would work in implementation, and really leaned in on your knowledge and your history in Costa Mesa. For Commissioner Toller, who was writing emails to the Planning Commission before any of, he even started on the Planning Commission, I've learned so much about active transportation and really digging your heels into what planning means. For Commissioner Erath, we are new to each other, but I appreciate your dedication so far to the Planning Commission. And I'm looking forward to seeing your service here. For Chair DeRico, I have so appreciated serving on your Planning Commission and just learning from you and seeing just the history of the city. Thank you all for serving alongside me and for allowing me to learn and invest in the community. For city staff, it has been an absolute pleasure, planner to planner. I have just really enjoyed this process. Thank you so much. And for the residents, for the countless letters, emails, calls, everything that we have done is done with so much intention towards the betterment and goodness of this city. I've been honored, and I hope to continue forward in my career and in my service with what I've learned from you all. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Jenna. Commissioner Russell, would you like to share any thoughts?
Sure, absolutely. I want to miss you a lot. Your thoughtful ability to listen
to what was being said, your knowledge of the concepts, your ability to ask those exact questions, and your ability to pull it together in terms of your knowledge of policy. And as the Chairman read, all of those things that you already knew how to do, and that you were able to bring that to us and share with the community was just, it's been a really honor to serve with you. So, good luck. I look forward to seeing where you go next.
Thank you. Commissioner Zick. Sorry. Turn the mic on. It should work. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead. Now, you can punch it. You'll be good.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Jenna, I really appreciated working with you, and in particular, your views and perspectives while you were on the Planning Commission. Many of the ideas you had were different than mine and enlightened me, and I appreciated that. You were very much respected in the community. And you were very thoughtful in your engagement on all the applications in front of us. And your professionalism was beyond reproach. And I appreciated that, too. Whatever the future holds for you, good luck. I know you'll be successful.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Commissioner Erath.
Thank you, Chair DeRico. Yes, I would like to say a few words. I think my colleagues pretty much said it best. You know, as the newest member on this Commission, I can't say that I know many of you very well, but I knew reputations leading up to this appointment. And for Jenna, I had seen her on this Planning Commission for several months before I came on board. And I share the sentiment. Very thoughtful, very kind, very wise, in that your decisions along the way were always well-balanced. And you will be missed. But I hope that we'll be able to stay in touch through time and hope to see you back here in Costa Mesa again at some point. So, thank you. Thank you for your dedication to the city and look forward to seeing all the great things that you'll be doing hereafter. Thanks, Jenna.
Well, my dear, we're losing a real asset. You know, it is, I do work in jurisdictions all over California, actually, and observe many, marry, a lot of Planning Commissions and city councils and engage with them. And it is rare that Planning Commissions are made up of people who are professional planners. And so, your perspective that you brought along with, you know, Vice Chair Harlan, who's also a certified planner, and Caderius Colbert, was really helpful for me, even though I've been plying this trade for a while. I always learned something from you. Particularly, sometimes I tend to think of things two-dimensionally. And you brought a three-dimensional perspective to planning that I appreciated. While I'm sad you're leaving us, I have no doubt that our career paths are going to cross and we'll probably do some work together in the future. And I'm looking forward to that because you're immensely talented. And I know the work you're doing out in the community relative to housing, urban planning in general, is going to leave a lasting mark, whatever jurisdiction that you're involved in. So, I want to congratulate you on a great career that you're having. Congratulate you on the great work you did on the Commission and wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. Okay? Yeah, let's take a picture. That'd be great. Okay. So, that's our announcements and presentations. We do have to elect a new Vice Chair. I'm going to declare that the position of Vice Chair is vacant. And we'll, before we take nominations for Vice Chair, I will open the floor to public comment. If there are any members of the public in the chambers or via telephone wishes to comment on this particular item, please come forward to the podium. If you're in the chambers. If not, Julie, do we have any members of the public wish to speak to this item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Phone number ending in 698. You may provide your public comment on Vice Chair selection.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I don't have a comment on that.
Okay. So, don't comment via telephone. Is there any others, Julie, on the telephone?
Nobody else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We'll close public comment. I will open the DIAS and the Zoom conference with Commissioner Erath to any nominations for Vice Chair. Are there any nominations? Just give me a high sign if there are.
I'll defer to my colleagues.
Okay. Going once. So, Ms. Lee, are we required to fill that position tonight? Or can we defer to the second meeting in August to wait for Commissioner Russell to come back?
I will defer to our city attorney's office, but I believe our bylaws specify that we will fill vacancies at the next regular meeting.
That's what I figured. Okay. Mr. Braziosi, is that correct? Okay. Okay. I will then nominate Commissioner Zick as Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. Is there a second?
All second.
Okay. So, we have a nomination on the floor for Commissioner Zick to serve as Vice Chair and a second by Commissioner Russell. Is there any comment on the motion? Okay. Seeing none, I will ask for a roll call vote. Please, Julie.
Chair DeRico.
Aye.
Commissioner Erath.
Nay.
Commissioner Russell.
Aye.
Commissioner Zick.
Aye.
That motion carried 3-1 with Commissioner Erath voting no and Commissioner Toller absent.
Okay. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Vice Chair Zick. We'll go ahead and have comments when we get to Commissioner Comments if you would like to make some. But congratulations. That moves us to public comments. Public comments are for items that are not on tonight's agenda but are within the jurisdiction of the Costa Mesa Planning Commission. Again, that's for items not on tonight's agenda but matters that come before us under our authority. Public commenters, you have three minutes to speak. And we have one member of the public. And we'll, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Commissioner. Kenny Humphrey, Costa Mesa resident. I know you guys all miss me, so I decided I had to come down and see you at least one more time. I'm calling to talk about, are we at two minutes as opposed to three?
I'm working on that. Go ahead, Jay.
Okay. I'll wait.
Keep going. You're, I've got you.
You may or may not have heard my comments at the council meeting, so I plan to bring them to you because you're the first stop for any planning that goes on of any size. And One Metro West was touted as being a good project for one reason in particular, because it helped with our RINA number. So, we got 106 affordable housing units out of that. And when you simply do the math, you find out that model may not be a good model. And I'll explain. To in fact create, look at our RINA number right now, the number requires on anybody less than the median income, using that median income spot half and half, is 5,700 units of affordable housing. At 109, that means you have to have 54 groups of that. So, you have to have 54 of those projects on 14 acres, which means that of those projects, they make 700-plus acres, which is greater than a square mile. And for those of you who can't visualize a square mile, go over to Miles Square Park. That's a square mile. And that's 640 acres. And to accomplish using that method to reach our RINA number in eight years would in fact require 54 units. And oh, it's not a big deal, 54 units. It's spread out over the 16 square miles of the city. It's no big deal. Oh, but it would increase the population of Costa Mesa, assuming all those units got filled with people at the rate that they say it would fill, at 1.97 people per unit, to double the population of Costa Mesa and to more than double the number of housing units in the City of Costa Mesa in the next eight years. So, as a model, it doesn't do very good. And I'm concerned that this Planning Commission, the city council, doesn't think of options such as what was done before, an SRO, on taking these terrible motels we have in town, huh, and convert them to an SRO with rules and controls and what have you. And they've had three very, I'm sorry, two very successful SROs in town. And oh, and by the way, every one of those units is an affordable housing unit. Therefore, you are not adding to the overall mix, the overall mass of housing. You are simply adding to the control of the major part of the RINA because the number of people in RINA that you have to deal with are all, or more than half, affordable housing. So, please, keep in mind that that may not be a good model to use and that it'll only do, the only thing it'll do was if we double the population, what do we do with the traffic? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Before we go to the next person, I just got a note that there is a car out in the parking lot. And I don't know if this belongs to anybody in the chambers, but there's a dog inside. So, I don't, you know, if there is, I would appreciate if somebody would check on the poor guy to make sure he's okay, or she. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention if anybody's in the chambers. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Go ahead, sir.
All right. So, essentially, what I'm asking for from you is a bit of follow-through. A bit over a year ago, I think a year and a month ago, the Planning Commission sent a letter to the city council asking for the creation of a human relations and equity committee. And while that has not happened yet, I think that this is a very important issue. And I think that it's definitely something that we should have, and especially relates to you as the Planning Commission. And I just hope that we can get some follow-through and actually get that committee formed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, the Commission did send a letter to the city council. It's in their court. Okay? Anyone else in chambers wish to speak during public comment? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom or telephone, Julie?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. If caller ending in 698, you may provide your public comment.
Caller 698.
Please unmute yourself.
At last week's city council meeting, new business item number one featured a $15,000 gold-plated toilet seat paid for by Costa Mesa taxpayers. This gold-plated toilet seat sang about raccoons and bird twitterings and was disguised as a quote-unquote "sound study of the noise impacts from Smart and Final on the homes behind the outdoor food storage area behind the store, third-world grocery and food storage standards in the alley 10 feet away from which are a row of single-family homes." Can anyone on this Commission explain why a sound study was agreed to where a measurement took place behind Strut Bar itself 90 feet away from this non-industry standard operation and literally hundreds of feet from negatively impacted homes? Or how about leaving out the relevant municipal codes upon which to base the findings? That is plain corruption. Our center street neighborhood, two doors from the soup kitchen, continues to bear the brunt of beggar thy neighbor business models. Residents here do not get the protection of the municipal codes. Staff just leaves them out. Did they do the same to the volume of work they did for One Metro West? And to top it off, our city council district representative quite proclaim to listeners that this is not the soup kitchen neighborhood. Did I say every house behind Smart and Final is literally two doors from the soup kitchen? This Planning Commission has purview over these activities. And as a Strut Bar, Thursday through Sunday, low-frequency-based poundings continue, and the Newport Mesa school year rapidly approaches. We call on the city to abate these nuisances using the California unlawful liquor sales abatement law. Strut Bar and Smart and Final, in their normal operations, are a public nuisance. Stop with the gold-plated toilet seats paid to aging so-called experts that appear to not only have lost hearing but also judgment. Lastly, paying careless attention to a zoning administrator's approval of a back-room minor conditional use permit for Smart and Final to store foodstuffs outdoors is a precedent that will allow their third-world standards to perpetuate throughout the city and not just here in the blighted soup kitchen neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Julie, any other public commenters on the telephone?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I will close public comment then, and we'll go to Planning Commissioner Comments. We'll begin with Commissioner Erath.
I have no comments at this time, Chair DeRico. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Russell.
Those of you that went to the concert in the park know what a wonderful experience it was. The music was great. And it was so exciting to see all of the bicyclists. And I think that we showed that if you provide a safe way of getting somewhere on a bike and you provide parking for those bikes where they can be locked up, people will ride their bikes places. So, I just want to highlight that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Vice Chair Zick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your earlier nomination. I look forward to continuing to work with the Commission and staff and members of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm going to ask the Commissioners and the public to indulge the Chair a little bit. I'm going to reflect a little bit on people who have, good, talented people who've left the Commission and are leaving the community, and where we're at in our planning process for the housing element. Talk a little bit maybe about curating the next generation of Costa Masons, and I can't believe I just used that word, but I did. And housing and leadership. So, when I learned that Vice, former Vice Chair Torje was going to be departing the Commission, and I had learned also from former Vice Chair Colbert, he is departing the Commission, and I don't want to divulge any of the details, conversations I had with them, save for the fact that some of it has to do with housing. And I'm very concerned that we are hemorrhaging young talent from this town and future generations of residents who could serve this community, whether they do it, you know, via community service at a nonprofit, through their church, or they actually serve on a body here within the city government. And it kind of, it forced me to go back and relook at our community profile that has been developed as part of the housing element update process. And I was struck again by some things that are happening. Let's just talk about population growth. And I know that's something that Mr. Humphrey mentioned. Between, let's say, now and 2040, and this is a SCAG number, our population is projected to grow just 2.2%. That's the third lowest among Newport Beach, Costa Mesa, Irvine, San Ana, Huntington Beach, and indeed, all of Orange County. San Ana is projected to grow 0.7%. Huntington Beach, 1.6%. In my mind, and again, I'm just reflecting, and these are my opinions, that's stagnation. If you aren't growing a population, you know, I'm going to be perfectly honest, perfectly candid, we don't all live forever. And if we aren't thinking about future generations and setting the table for future generations of Costa Masons in the city, and we just allow our population to stagnate, I think we do, we don't do the future of this town justice. And I don't think we help ourselves from an economic development standpoint either. And then I looked at their age distribution in Costa Mesa between 2010 and 2018. And right now, our population, well, by, in 2018, and I guess this is really, this is more of what a projection was. So, 27% roughly of our population is age 50 and older. 66% of our population ranges from age five. They're not renters or homeowners, obviously. Five to 19 is 17%. 19-year-olds could be renters. Don't know. I'll I'll touch on this in a moment. 20 to 34-year-olds are 27%. 35 to 49-year-olds are 22%. But here's what concerns me, and these are just nominal downticks, but they're downticks nonetheless. 2010, the population of 5 to 19-year-olds was 17.3% of our population. 2018, it was 17%. Nominal, but it's still a decline. 2010, 28% of our population were 20 to 34-year-olds. 2018, 27.4%. Again, a nominal decline, but a decline, and maybe anecdotal, but maybe a trend's developing. I don't know. I'm worried a trend may be developing. 35 to 49-year-olds declined from 23.6% in 2010 to 22%. In the meantime, population of those age 50 to 64 grew from 15% to 17% and 65-plus from 8.5 to 10.7. I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I'm in that group. I think we can provide wisdom in leadership and direction in the city, and I, you know, happy to do that. I'm glad we're here. But I'm worried that youngsters are leaving, or starting to leave this town precisely because the principal reason may be why Vice Chair Colbert and Vice Chair Torje are leaving this town, is because it's tough to afford to live here. So, job growth versus population. So, keeping in mind the population numbers, this is again a SCAG study, job growth in Costa Mesa, job growth is expected to grow by 8,600 jobs between 2012 and 2040, 10.2% increase. We're having a 10.2% increase in jobs. These are projections, I understand. But an overall population growth of just 2.2%. So, we're creating more jobs here. We have a population that is at least stagnant according to these numbers, which tells me if you're going to fill these jobs and your population's declining, that those jobs are going to get filled by people who don't live in Costa Mesa and therefore are going to commute in, traffic. And then I went to household characteristics, and this was particularly striking to me. So, in 2018, married-coupled family households comprised 42.8% of the households in Costa 10.2% of the households were female-led households with no spouse present. 6.7% were male households with no spouse present. So, that's about 16.9, 17%. Here's the kicker. Non-family households, I don't necessarily know what that is, but I'm going to take a wild guess that it's a bunch of people renting a house together or a bunch of roommates in an apartment or a house. 40.2% of the households in Costa Mesa. So, that was striking to me in that it explains a lot why we have always been upside down in our rent-to-owner occupied ratio from 60 to 40. If 40.2% of your households are non-family households, a bunch of people pitching in to rent a place, that tells me, one, you don't have enough housing, and, two, it's expensive. And if you want to reverse that trend, you've got to create more housing that is attainable and affordable to more people to fill the jobs that are coming so that we don't have what is next on the roster, which is overcrowding. So, here's kind of piggybacks on that emphasis on non-family households or female-led or male-led households with no spouse. So, it could be somebody who's single, who's relatively successful, but they still have, you know, renting an apartment or could easily have been, my oldest daughter just moved from our house after 29 years, very successful, has a great income, couldn't find a place to live, Costa Mesa, that was close to her job. She finally moved to Laguna Niguel, found a condo that a really nice guy who loved her and wanted a good, stable tenant said, "You know what? I'll give it to you for what you can afford," and he did. She lucked out. But get this. Of our 40,555 households, and this is HUD, these are HUD statistics, 46% of our household fall within the low-income category as defined by SCAG and HCD, HD-CD, so AMI. Basically, 40% of our households are at low-income, very low-income, or extremely low-income. So, that explains why they're all grouping up and buying places in these non-family households that make up 40% of our population. Low-income, retail worker, fast-food server, pharmacy clerk, whatever the job is, we have all sorts of those kinds of jobs in Costa Mesa, and the folks that are working those are either living in one of those, living with their parents, or living in one of those non-family households, or they're commuting in. Costa Mesa's median household income is 7% below the county median income. County median's 85%. Median household income as of 2018 for Costa Mesa was 79.2. We need to attract higher-income residents. How do we do that? We attract companies like Andoril. We find companies like Vans. But if we attract them and they bring in the high-salary employees and we don't have a housing stock able to provide for those employees, they will go somewhere else and We're exporting our talent if we don't address our housing issues. So, the income breakdown. So, 14% of our households make less than $25,000 a year. And these are, again, these are American Community surveys. These are 2018 estimates, so they could change a little bit. 25, 7%, and by the way, less than $25,000, you can't afford. You can't even afford a room in somebody's house if you're making $25,000. $25,000 to 34, 9, $35,000, 7% of our households can't afford to live here unless you're rooming up in a non-family household, living with a parent. $35,000 to $50,000, 10% of our households still can't afford. $50,000 to $74,000, 16% maybe can't afford with a roommate. And then you get into $75,000 to $100,000, 14%. Then you can maybe find something, if you can find something. 435 or 12% of our owner-occupied units in Costa Mesa, and again, this is American Community Survey data, 2018, 12% of our owner-occupied units are overcrowded. 435, that's more than one person per room. That's the, that's the benchmark. Renter-occupied overcrowded units, 3,251, more than one person per room. That's 88% of the overcrowded housing units in Costa Mesa. Non-family households, a bunch of kids renting a place together, whatever it is, non-family, it's not multi-generational families. These are non-family households. Costa Mesa has the second-highest percentage of overcrowded housing units between, among Newport Beach, Costa Mesa, Irvine, San Ana, Huntington Beach, and, in fact, Orange County's percentage is a tenth below ours. San Ana has the highest. Burdened, housing cost burdens. Again, these are HUD numbers from 2013 through 2017. 5,035 households in Costa Mesa are housing cost burdened. That means they're spending more than 30% of their income on housing. That's 31% of all owner-occupied households in Costa Mesa. 2,335 owner-occupied households, which is 14.7% of those owner-occupied households are severely cost-burdened, they're paying more than 50% in, for their housing, of their monthly income. Here's where it gets interesting again. Let's talk about renters. Summary of overpay, housing overpayments for renters. Again, this is HUD, these are HUD statistics. 12,045 renter households in Costa Mesa are spending more than 30% of their income on housing. That's 48.8% of all renter households in Costa Mesa. 6,440 are paying more than 50%, extremely cost-burdened for their housing, 26.1% of all Costa Mesa renter households. Again, expensive, living check-to-check, maybe grocery visit to grocery visit. So, as I'm listening to folks, that's kind of the picture that's very troubling to me. And as I approach this housing element, and I listen to folks from all over the spectrum, I see, my wife and I sit out on our porch pretty much every night and have a glass of wine, watch all the young families walking by with strollers, and we keep saying, "Isn't that neat? It reminds us of 1993 when we moved here with our four kids, and they were all youngsters." And it's just good to see that kind of revitalization happening in terms of the population. But I keep asking myself, "How are they doing it?" Because the homes that are on the market around my neighborhood are all a million-plus, and these are 1960-era homes. You have to make a lot of money to afford a million-dollar house. Maybe they've got really helpful parents to help them with down payment, I don't know. Maybe they have really great jobs, I don't know. Maybe they're renting them. Don't know. But it's good to see, but I would like to be able to create a situation in Costa Mesa where they can stay if they want to, maybe buy a place if they want to ultimately. And so, then I listen to folks I've known for 25 years in this community who are my age, who are really worried about things like One Metro West, or really worried about arena number that's approaching 12,000 units, and where are we going to plan for that? Worried about the R1 neighborhoods in Costa Mesa. Worried about what the state may place on us in terms of mandates and whether or not the R1 neighborhoods in Costa Mesa, which by the way, are, those kind of neighborhoods are the minority in Costa Mesa. There are more multifamily housing units in Costa Mesa than single-family homes, and yet, there's not enough. So, I listen to those folks, and I understand. I, my, my mom and dad moved my brother and my sister-in-law to Orange County in 1962. I was four. I remember it. It was all Orange Groves. My dad would take us down Irvine Boulevard to go to see the airshow at El Toro. It was all Orange Groves. So, I've seen it change, and I've loved the change. There's no, I'm under no illusion that we could ever hope that Orange County would have stayed the way it did back then. If it did, and everything else around us, we'd be hardly worth visiting from an economic standpoint. So, I get the concern of my demographic, they're worried about change, they're worried about more people. We need more people. We do. We need more houses so that we don't have overcrowded houses. We need more houses that are affordable so all these jobs that are going to be created aren't, those, those workers aren't coming here from Corona or somewhere inland and clogging up the freeways, but could live close, maybe bike to their job or walk to their job. So, to come around full circle on my comment, and I'm sorry I'm running long, but I'm, it's kind of a reckoning for me, because I've got 16, maybe 17 months left on this commission. Over those next 17 months, I'm going to be a dog about this, and I'm not going to let go. This housing element, we have to plan for these units. Don't want to put them in the R1 neighborhood. Don't want to put them in anywhere that's going to cause conflict between industry and housing. But we're going to plan for more housing for this community so that we can curate the next generation of Costa Masons, and we can have the housing we need to allow youngsters like Kaderius Colbert and Jenna Torje and whoever else the young people are who are going to lead this community in the future can live here, enjoy the lifestyle here, and serve their community. So, what I'm asking tonight, this is kind of a call to action for all you 19-year-olds to 34-year-olds, start paying attention to your city government, start paying attention to this housing element, insist that your community leaders plan for and provide the housing you need to stay here and to do your jobs and to stay local and to spend your money here. If we do that, then Costa Mesa will have been well-served, and when I'm gone, not just from this commission, but from the planet, there will be a city that everybody can enjoy for that generation before they hand it off to the next generation. It's all about passing the torch, like President Kennedy said. We need to pass the torch, and we need to prepare this city for the next generation of Costa Masons. Thank you. We have no items on the consent calendar tonight, and that will take us to public hearing. And we have one public hearing tonight. Julie, would you please read that into the record?
Yes. Public hearing item number one, planning application 21-06 for a minor conditional use permit for the service and repair of motor vehicles within 200 feet of residentially-zoned property at 261 to 263 Briggs Avenue. Please note that we have not received any public comments on this item. This is a call to report any ex parte communications.
Thank you. Commissioners, any ex parte communications report? Okay, hearing done.
Chair DeRico, I'm going to have to recuse myself from this item on the grounds that I'm actually working on noise contours at the county, and it may include but not be limited to this area.
Okay. So, given that, we will not have a quorum on this item, so we are going to have to, I'll have to move that we continue this item until the second meeting in August. Would I be correct on that, City Attorney?
You're not at the forum.
Yes. Okay. So, can we even take action to continue it, or just, we'll just?
No.
That's true. Okay. So, I guess it'll just be agendized for the next meeting. Okay. Very good. Commissioner Erath, thank you very much for that. Mr. Lamb, I'm sorry, we're just light right now, so wait a couple more weeks, we'll hopefully get you teed up. Okay, very good. Get back to my agenda, so bear with me. Okay, we have no old business tonight, no new business, so we'll take -- go to departmental reports. Ms. Lee, Public Services -- I'm sorry, Mr. Yang, Public Services.
Yes, thank you, Chairman DeRico, and honorable members of the Planning Commission. Good evening. Our Public Services announcement or report is as follows. Just wanted to announce the Wilson Street Pipeline Project. This is a project by Mesa Water District, and we'll be informing the neighborhood and the community with respect to this project, in which a water main pipeline will be installed along Wilson Street between Newport Boulevard all the way to Harbor Boulevard. The start of the construction is tentatively scheduled during mid-August, perhaps around August 16th, and will run around the spring of 2022, after which the Public Service Department will commence a street improvement project that will begin from Newport Boulevard and also along to Harbor Boulevard, but also to Placentia Avenue as well. So we look forward to the new infrastructure that is being implemented in our community and also the improvement of our streets and parkways for all of us to enjoy. So that's it for my Public Services announcement. I'll just defer back to the chair.
Thank you, sir, very much. Development Services, Ms. Lee.
Thank you. I have two brief updates this evening. First, I wanted to update the commission on the status of the housing element, following up on my update from our last meeting. We are putting the finishing touches on the public review draft of the housing element following the Joint Planning Commission-City Council Study Session, and we do expect to release it for public comment next week. And we'll have additional information both on our website. We'll be publicizing the release on our social media accounts, as well as using our local community group contacts. And we'll also be doing a citywide mailer as well. Following the public comment period, we will be having a community meeting as well as an additional study session with the Planning Commission and City Council, and we'll be reaching out to you shortly regarding those dates. So that's my update this evening. We're moving ahead and excited to share the housing element with our community.
Great.
Next, just a quick update on Smart &amp; Final. Some of the commissioners have asked about the status over the last few months. Essentially, as a follow-up to receiving a number of complaints from at least one resident adjacent to Smart &amp; Final, the city opted to, one, do our own follow-up with our code enforcement officers. We took something on the magnitude of 400 individual noise readings over the course of a week-long period. We did not observe any code violations, but just based on the recurring complaints that we received, we retained a noise expert to do an official noise analysis, and we presented that report to the City Council at their last meeting. The results of that noise study were that there were no observed code violations. Staff will continue to follow up with Smart &amp; Final regarding good neighbor practices. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. City Attorney, report, Mr. Preziosi.
No report tonight, Chair.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Brief meeting, but thank you all for attending. We will adjourn the Costa Mesa Planning Commission to the regularly scheduled meeting of August 23, 2021. Good night.